Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evans School District Six. Today is October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Azari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitzey.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome to our Board of Education meeting. I see a lot of familiar faces, a lot of older faces, not older faces, faces we haven't seen in a while, Mr. Bentley. That's all I meant. I also see some special faces. The Chief of Police is here tonight. Also, one of our representatives on the State Board of Education is here tonight. So, we're very honored that so many of you are joining our Board of Education meeting tonight and are with us. And so, thank you for being here. We do have a lot to cover tonight, a lot of ground to get through. So, I won't take a lot of time to make announcements to you. I do just want to say a few things that happened in our work session just a few moments ago. Every year, we get an update in our work session from our Fulbright Scholars, and these are scholars that come to the United States and come to UNC from other countries, and they work inside of our schools, and they provide us once a year with their experience in our schools. And I know, I don't know about you, but I hear so many negative things about our schools, and not necessarily District Six. We hear a lot of positive things here. But across America in general, that our country is not competitive with other countries, and that the education in our country is not as good as the education in other countries. And I just want to let you know that that is not what we hear every year from these Fulbright Scholars. And they're very thankful for the opportunity to learn from our teachers. They speak every year about the professionalism of our teachers. They speak all the time about the opportunities that the students in the United States get that students around the country don't always get. The way that we serve our special education students, for instance, and the ways that we serve those that are not English or that need English-language learning assistance. And so, just something we got to hear, something we got to appreciate that not everybody gets to appreciate, and I wanted to share it with you this evening. So, that's all I'll say tonight, because we do have a very full agenda. And Dr. Pilch, I'm going to turn it over to you for your superintendent's honor roll.
Thank you, President Matthews, and thank you for recognizing the Fulbright Scholars. I am going to introduce them again when we get to my superintendent comments, because I think many of them are standing out in the hallway. It is my honor tonight for the superintendent's honor roll to recognize our Greeley and Evans School District Resource Officers. We are so fortunate to have the partnership we have with the City of Greeley and the City of Evans and their police chiefs and their school resource officers. And many of you are aware that we went through a pretty rough week here a few weeks ago with some school threats, and because of the diligent work of the school resource officers and their colleagues at the police departments, we were able to stop all of those threats, get them taken care of, and we have not had additional threats since then. Because I think what students learned through all of that is that we will find out who made the threat, and there will be police action and there will be school district action for discipline for threats against the schools. So, with that, I'm so excited to introduce to you Chief Wade Corliss to come forward, talk a little bit about our school resource officers and this partnership. And like you, it's an honor to have Chief Turk here in the room tonight and to be a part of the presentation, as well as his officers who have joined tonight. Come on up, Chief.
Yeah. Okay. Tonight, we will be honoring our SRO officers. I just want to read a brief statement before I get into that here in one second. I'm grateful for the opportunity to recognize the great work that is done every day by our school resource officers here in Greeley-Evans District Six. As the Chief of Safety and Security for District Six, I am dependent on the support of the SROs from Greeley PD, Evans PD, and the Well County Sheriff's Office. These partnerships significantly improve the safety and security of our schools. Recently, during the week of September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, there were several school shooting threats that were made towards our schools, which were highly disruptive and negatively impacted many of our students, staff, and families throughout our community. During these situations, the SRO officers worked swiftly and diligently to investigate each of these threats and ultimately were able to solve these cases quickly. Due to the quick response by the SRO officers, Greeley-Evans School District Six was able to restore our schools back to a safe learning environment. This is just one example of the great work which is done by our SRO officers on a daily basis to support Greeley-Evans District Six. So, tonight, in honoring of the SRO officers, as I read your names off, if you could come up here, we have Jacques Coward with Greeley Police Department, Alden Hill, Officer Nathan Yeh, Officer Savell Diaz, and then Police Chief Adam Turk, as well as Acting Commander and School Resource Officer Sergeant David Wiles. I also want to make sure that we recognize our Evans School Resource Officer, Deidra Ramirez. She's not able to join us tonight, as well as the Well County Sheriff's Office, School Resource Officer Sergeant Jason Phipps. So, if you could, if... So, you've got a little bit more to read here, okay? So, it's one second, okay? All right. These dedicated individuals play a vital role in creating a safe and supportive environment for our students and staff. Our school resource officers are more than just projectors. They are mentors, confidants, and allies. They foster positive relationships within our school community, ensuring that every student feels secure and valued. Through their commitment and their help to bridge the gap between law enforcement and our youth, teaching is an important lesson about respect, responsibility, and teamwork. We recognize the challenges they face daily and the sacrifices they made to ensure our safety. Their presence allows us to focus on learning, growing, and thriving in an environment where we feel protected and understood. Let us take a moment to thank our school resource officers for their unwavering dedication of service. You are truly appreciated, and we are grateful for everything you do. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Sir, Dr. Pilch, my name is Adam Turk. I'm the Greeley Police Chief, and I'm going to start by saying I am honored and humbled to be standing here and representing the men and women standing behind me. And make no bones about it, the heavy lift and the work done is by the officers behind me, by Officer Coward, Officer Yeh, and Officer Diaz. Very few things caused me to put my coffee cup down and get nervous. School threats are one of them, and I will tell you when they happen, it's all hands-on-deck, regardless of where or why. Because we know these threats have a lot of unintended consequences, and they affect the entire district, not just the school, not just the school district, but all the parents, family members, and everyone else involved. So, I am forever grateful for our relationship with District Six. This did not happen overnight. In fact, I think it started more with, obviously, Mayor Gates in his position, and then when Dr. Pilch went on a recruiting trip at the Greeley Police Department and took Chief Corliss and Director from the department. But our relationship is second to none. We're grateful for that. Thank you for having us here tonight. And truly, the picture and all the work goes to these officers standing behind us, to include Sergeant Wiles. So, thank you for having us here tonight, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And I would just say, there are five of us up here that every day drop off a child at a school, and we appreciate the work of our resource officers greatly. And we appreciate it, not just as board members, but as parents. So, moving right along, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda, and we'll need a... This is an action item, so we'll need a motion to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitzey.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our bond appreciation and recognition. So, I see Mr. Ken Henson coming to the podium. Welcome, Mr. Henson.
Thank you, President Matthews and Board of Education. One thing we've learned over the last nearly five years with the bond work is the word completion is a relative term. So, as we've come a long way over the last few years, today, we're putting some of the final glass into Brentwood, and so, it's a little bit later than we anticipated, but we are coming to the completion of the bond. And with that, we'd like to acknowledge some people that have worked very hard over the last four years. Imagine you having your forty-hour-a-week job and then having a bond put on top of it, where in addition to attending to work orders or doing whatever it is you're doing, you also have to do these other things, like look at blueprints, go on walks, ensuring that our general contractors are doing work, purchasing things for new schools, and things like that. So, we have a group of people here that I'm very proud of, and really, we're the backbone for making the bond work. And so, we'd like to acknowledge them today. So, President Matthews, if you would, come and help me here in a second. Tonight, we are near completion of this successful two thousand and nineteen bond issue. We'd like to recognize some of the people that went above and beyond their normal job duties to make this successful. These people in the Communications, Finance, IT, and Facilities Departments were dedicated to the passing and subsequent completion of the two thousand and nineteen bond, beginning with the creation and production of every publication necessary to support the passing of the bond, to ordering every necessary material from pencils for new schools to welding equipment and everything else for all buildings, to the creation and follow-up of district standards within projects, along with approving blueprint drawings, providing comments on all construction documents, and performing site walks for quality control. Without their diligence and leadership, the bond would not have been the success that it was. We would like to recognize these people with a presentation of a plaque from the Board of Education. So, Mr. Matthews, if you would stand here, I would ask, as I read your name, if you would come up front and accept your plaque and then stand in the front. There's about twenty of you, so space yourself. You did a good job with the bond, so we'll see if you can figure that out. So, first, with the Communications Department, starting with, really, everything that went out about the bond, written, even vocal, everything. Teresa Myers, our Chief Communications Officer, did a tremendous job in the pre-bond work and all the way through, keeping the community updated. So, thank you, Teresa. Okay, and then how about, since there's twenty, we'll hold our applause till the very end, and then we'll give them a big one. Okay, and also, Casey Pearson. Teresa, we're going to ask you to stand up here. Thank you. No, I got that taken care of. I got it taken care of. Okay, also in the Communications Department, Casey Pearson, who designed all the graphics, all the flyers, all the mailers, everything that went out in that pre-bond. Thank you very much, Casey. In our Finance Department, as I said earlier, ordering, 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 working with vendors. We have twelve hundred classrooms in the district. They all got new furniture, every desk, table, cafeteria table, pencil, everything was vetted for. So, for this group, Mandy Hydock, our Director of Finance. Scott Francis, our Purchasing Manager. Candy Headley, our Bond Accountant. And Jenny Severance, our Purchasing Agent. In our Facilities and IT Departments, Mandy Larson, our Director of Facilities, is not able to be here tonight. She came in about two years ago and has done a tremendous job of really getting us looking forward to the next bond. So, she's not able to be here. Also, Matthew Holzmeister, our Building Maintenance Manager. He did floors, walls, and ceilings and roofs. That's a lot of square footage. He's not able to be here tonight. Philip Balades, our Mechanical Maintenance Manager, boilers, chillers, coolers, everything in between. Romas Zablakas. Romas is our Energy Engineer. Most people haven't seen him. Welcome, Romas. He controls the temperatures in every building, in every room in the district. He has a big job. Also, worked with the engineers when we were designing heating and cooling systems. Kent Anderson, our retired, he came out of retirement to be here tonight, our former grounds manager, really got our large projects set off in a good shape, a lot of outdoor square footage with irrigation and such. Brian Dunbar, our Grounds Foreman. Brian Dunbar, our grounds foreman, irrigation specialist. And in between, we, the time we hired Kent and Aaron, who will come up next, Brian did a lot of work above and beyond. Aaron Quinlan, our grounds department manager, who's been with us for about a year and has done a lot of work on our last projects with irrigation and grounds. David Upton, our Electrical Department Manager. Moving to LED, automated controls, lights that come on, on and off by programming. John Tate did all the access control locks, security cameras, regular mechanical locks, every classroom, every room in the district. Michael Schofield, our low voltage wireless and Berkeley and fire panel. He does the work on the stuff that we get called out on when there's stuff that happens at night. It's very important. And Tony Chek, our IT Director, making sure, really had a lot of input on setting up classrooms in regards to wireless connections, et cetera. And then last, last group here is our owners' representatives. So this group, we hired the day after the bond, they were with us every day of the bond, even had office in our facilities building. First person that I'll introduce is Michael Craig. Those principals that were in here know Michael because he was a dog. He's the one that got in with general contractors, worked with principals, worked with our guys to make sure the nuts and bolts were on schedule and everything was completed. Jacob Dietrich is not able to be here tonight, but he did all of our punch lists. So in every building, oh, there's a paint scratch there, we have to fix that. He kept track of that and has worked that down to nearly zero in thirty projects. He did an excellent job. And then Jeff Curtly in the back, project manager, all projects. Can't say enough about Jeff and RLH Engineering, which is now Answer Advisory, working between us and the city and all the permitting, making sure that the funding is going in the right direction, in the right bucket, in between finance and myself. Without them, we couldn't have done this bond. So, with that, I'd like to thank and have you recognize this group of individuals that really took on a huge load over the, hasn't even been five years yet. Four and three-quarters years, we've completed thirty, nearly completed, thirty bond projects, and thank you for your work. You? Yeah. All right, you guys see we love District Six on three, one, two, three. Somebody have their eyes open. You're good. Okay. If we could have you guys come stand over here a minute, and we'll wait for, if there's
Again, thank you. It's an amazing accomplishment, as has already been said, to do all of the work that got done in under five years. We are greatly appreciative, and I think we probably have a few people that want to say something. And the first is Mr. Longacre. This is, by the way, one of our student representatives. We have two student representatives from our Council of Student Reps that sit with us every board meeting and offer the insights of students. And so, thank you, Mr. Longacre. Go ahead.
I just really wanted to speak upon just the amazing work that's been going on from this set of people. I go to Northridge High School, and we recently had renovations to mainly our flooring, heating, cooling, and the desks and chairs. And honestly, it is a massive upgrade from what we had. I'll be super honest. Northridge, when I first went to that school, it was like a furnace. I'm going to be honest about that, it was like a furnace in there. So what you have done for that school is incredible. The students especially appreciate what's going on. Those desks, they used to have carving them and everything, and just getting a new set of furniture and everything in that school just gives it this new vibe, this new shine to it. It is a twenty-year-old school, but honestly, it still seems like it was built only five years ago because of what you amazing people have done for this school. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Longacre. Next, we have Mr. Ozari.
Well, I said this before at a couple of board meetings ago to Mr. Henson, but my service on the Historic Preservation Commission gives me an insight into the history of the school district and the construction projects that this district has undertaken since its conception way back in the eighteen-seventies. And this is the most amount of construction work that this district has ever seen. It surpasses even the construction work of the nineteen-sixties with our famous round buildings, when this school district put all those in, in a couple of years. So, just kudos to all of you for your work and the beauty of the buildings and the condition that they're in. As a longtime educator in this school district, I actually kind of want to go back now and be in those facilities and to teach in them. So, thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Ozari. Next, we have our other student representative, Ms. Sarah Venegas. Go ahead, Ms. Venegas.
Thank you. I also go to ECA. We have recently also gotten new furniture and new flooring, which I absolutely believe that gives our students more motivation to not only do better in the classroom, but to also be more social with each other. So I would just like to thank you for all your hard work in ensuring our schools are a safe and comfortable space for all students. I know, I really appreciate it, and every other student does as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Venegas. Next, we have Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, I just also wanted to express my gratitude and appreciation. I was doing my own construction project through COVID, which kind of gave me a little bit of insight to a tiny bit of the troubles you guys went through. And just knowing that you guys, you know, procured and did all that stuff in-house and still managed to come out under budget on time and have extra proceeds to do what we did, like the CTE Center and on all the other incredible projects. It just speaks volumes to your team as a whole, to the district, and the taxpayers and the voters should be proud of you guys and happy and confident that you guys did the best that you could with the dollars that they allowed us to have. I think one of the greatest benefits of this is maybe an untangible, the pride that the students and the staff is getting out as we walk through the buildings. Everybody is just so proud of their new buildings, and you heard it from the students. You know, you can just see the looks and the demeanor, and I don't think you can replace that with any amount of dollars. So, just from the bottom of our hearts, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Dr. Pilch.
Thank you, President Matthews. I want to go back to something that Mr. Henson said at the beginning in this presentation, which was that imagine doing the job you normally do, your full-time job, and then having a bond issue on top of that. That's what all of these folks did, and they did it with professionalism and excellence, and always an eye toward what would be best for students and staff and families here in District Six. And I want to commend all of you. You're truly a remarkable staff. You're truly remarkable leaders, and we are so fortunate to have you here. And that goes for you too, Mr. Henson. Thank you for your leadership through the bond. Truly amazing folks. Thank you so much.
Mr. Norwood.
I want to say thank you to all of you, some of you I've had the pleasure of working with, so I know the dedication that you have. And I have to ask Mr. Anderson, has it really been thirty years since we've known each other? Has it been that long? You know, thank you and enjoy retirement. And I didn't want to forget too, Mr. Henson, for all the work that you put in as well, too. So, we appreciate you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Any other comments from board members? I don't see any, so I will just extend and offer my thanks as well. You guys have done an amazing job. You have made us look very good, just in being able to deliver on time and on budget, to deliver far more than the board ever, ever promised the community. And I think we just learned tonight, we set out to get, we thought we would be able to eliminate a third of our portable, our temporary classrooms, and we really have been able to eliminate two-thirds, maybe more than those. There are only fifty of the one hundred and forty-four that we started with, there are only fifty-some-odd left. And to be able to do that is because we were able to add additions and we were able to do more than we thought we could do, more than we promised to do. And that is because of you. It is because of our administrative team and the hard work that you guys all put in. And we are so, so thankful, and I hope this, I hope this community is proud of the work that you've done. So, thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is our Council of Student Representatives report. Welcome to the podium, Mr. Aaron Allen, Principal at Northridge and our faculty sponsor. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board, President Matthews, and Dr. Pilch. I'm Aaron Allen, Principal at Northridge High School, and along with Victoria Leonard, Assistant Principal at Greeley Central, I support the Council of Student Representatives as an administrator. It's my great pleasure to introduce to you these young leaders from across District Six who represent the best of our schools. They are dedicated, passionate, and eager to make a difference in this community. Tonight, you'll hear from our elected leaders as they share their efforts to create a more engaged and united district. They bring fresh ideas and a commitment to ensuring that the voices of their peers are heard and valued. I'd like to start by introducing Timothy Longacre.
Good evening, District Six Board Members. My name is Timothy Longacre, and I'm honored to serve as this year's Council of Student Representatives President. I am a senior at Northridge High School, the second-in-command of its JRTC, and president of its National Honor Society. But here, I serve as the president of this amazing group I have. Upon discovering CSR during my junior year of high school, I knew it was the perfect place for me to make a lasting change in my community and help give voice to the students of District Six. Dr. Pilch created this council ten years ago upon her introduction to the district as its superintendent. Due to her passion in giving students a voice, I and the rest of this council's incredible leaders are now given the privilege to speak to you all today and help bring and create a better District Six. Over the past ten years, CSR has been able to enact its goal of community outreach to engage the community's students and families and bring unity to our schools. We've done this through past carnivals and volleyball tournaments throughout the district. We've also helped provide a better student voice to the students of District Six by having our members present their schools in district presentations and feedback discussions on the district's main departments such as mental health services and nutrition services. Now, without further ado, I would like to introduce the CSR Vice President, Edwin Powers.
Good evening. My name is Edwin Power, and I am a sophomore student at Northridge High School. And as Timothy mentioned, I am the current Vice President of the Council of Student Representatives. At my school, I will be part of the basketball team, as well as being involved in all three STEM pathways, taking a variety of advanced classes, which provide me lots of extra opportunities. Every year, our council's goal is to put on one community event per semester of the school year. This semester, we are planning to put on a winter movie night. Though we have yet to decide on a location, we have plans to show Home Alone in either Greeley West or Northridge's auditorium. It will take place sometime in early December and will be open to all District Six students and family. We plan to charge for entry for fundraising purposes, as well as have concessions available to those in attendance. We are very excited to do our part in building a community in our town, and would love to see everyone try to make time and come down to the movie night as we finalize the planning part of it. I'll now pass things on to our social media manager, Abigail Tovar.
Hi, all. My name is Abigail Tovar, and this year I will be running all the social media for our group. I'm in my junior year at Greeley Central and super excited to be a part of this. Throughout middle school, I struggled to envision what I wanted to do, but when I came to Greeley Central, I realized I could accomplish more than what I thought I could. I played three sports, including soccer, basketball, and cross-country, but four if you count dance. I'm a triple emphasis in our Arts Magnet program and hold leadership positions in Student Council, National Honor Society, and now the Council of Student Representatives for District Six. Over the summer, a few of us got together with the Greeley Evans Transit Department, and we made a video about bus etiquette. We figured that it would be helpful for all of the students who do take these buses to know how to be respectful on a public bus. It was super fun shooting different scenes, and the video came together well. Our group is currently working on getting it shared throughout all the high schools and posted on social media. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. We will now share the video with you all. We hope you enjoy.
In this video, we'll show you how to have a safe, fun, easy bus ride. When finding your bus stop, look for signs with a bus symbol. As the bus gets close, have your fare or student ID ready and make sure the driver can clearly see you. Step back and wait for the bus to come to a complete stop. Line up to get on the bus, letting people off before entering. If you have a bike or scooter, load it carefully, latching the wheel in place. Say hi to the bus driver, then pay your fare or show your student ID. Once you are on, find a seat quickly and set down any belongings in a safe place. While on the bus, follow these rules. No eating or smoking, always use headphones for music, and please, be polite when talking on the phone. If you stand, be sure to hold on tight, and if you're sitting down, please be willing to give up your seat to the elderly and disabled. In the case of an emergency, stay calm and listen to the bus driver. When you're approaching your destination, pull the cord to request a stop. Gather your belongings, thank the bus driver, and step away from the bus safely. If you have a bike, unload it carefully and be on your way. Remember these tips for a safe and comfortable bus ride. Thank you for watching and enjoy your trip.
Thank you again, and now our Secretary, Aleah, will speak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aleah Medina. I am a sophomore from Northridge High School, and my position in the Council of Student Representatives is the secretary. I am involved in STEM, upward bound, and I'm taking advanced classes on my journey towards college. This coming December sixth and December seventh, at this CASB conference, which all of us will be attending, is aiming to hone our leadership skills, help develop tools for effective leadership, and drive positive change in our school districts. High schoolers like us from all around Colorado will be attending, as well as board members and superintendents alike. A few years ago, members of CSR attended the CASB conference, and it resulted in the inclusion of student board members who continue to attend every board meeting. I am very excited and grateful to have the opportunity to attend. I'm excited to work with everyone to improve education and environments across the district. Thank you. I will now be introducing Sarah Venegas.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Venegas, and my position in the Student Council of Representatives is as a student board member. I am a junior at Early College Academy, or ECA, where I involve myself in National Honor Society Student Council and NAV crew. When I was given the opportunity to be part of CSR, I knew not only was I given the chance to be part of such an amazing group of students, but also the opportunity to support positive change throughout our District Six. Being part of such an amazing process that involves including spreading more awareness in our public bus transportation and creating more fundraising events that will help build our District Six into a more inclusive and safe space for all. We look forward to building our leadership skills and learning from students all across the state at our CASB conference in order to become stronger leaders for our district. I am more than hopeful that CSR members and myself will continue to spread awareness through our community in District Six and build all student voices. Thank you for your time and attention. If there are any questions or concerns, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, all of you. I don't know if we do have any questions, but I imagine some may be coming in, so. Ms. Mash.
Well, it's wonderful to meet all of you, and I look forward to hearing about your time at CASB. All of our students who have attended in the past have really enjoyed that experience, and we usually get to eat breakfast with you and hear all about it. But I also wanted to thank you for taking the time to make that video. It's an issue that's very important to a number of our community members and such a wonderful partnership that we have with Greeley Evans Transit to help us get our students to and from school. So I think that will be met with some enthusiastic support, and I thank you for making that.
Thank you. Vice President Mash, Dr. Campos Spitsi.
Yeah, I just also wanted to thank you all for introducing yourselves. You really are the best and the brightest of District Six, and so proud that you're a product of our schools. You're all very well-spoken and eloquent and involved in everything, so excited to hear more from you throughout the year. I think the Home Alone Night, it sounds like a great time to connect between high schools, and I'm glad that movie's still popular. It was popular when I was in high school. And the video is great. I can see it going viral, so now, Abigail, it's your job to make it viral, right? So kudos to you guys for championing something our community really cares about.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsi. And I'll just echo those thanks. Thank you for producing that video. That means a lot to us. There's not a lot that we can do to enforce student conduct on city buses. So we're thankful for what you guys can provide and what you have provided, and hopefully that'll get out to a lot of our students, but thank you. Next on our agenda, thank you. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. So, Dr. Pilch, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I will start with, we recognize the folks tonight who are all the managers and directors working with the bond. We are going to do an end-of-bond celebration this week. This is open to the public. We did send out notice to, you know, a couple hundred people, but it is open to the public. At Greeley West High School at 5:30, we'll gather there, and we'll have a brief program in the auditorium there, and then we'll have a reception. We'll also have some boards up on easels that show each bond project, and then some of the concepts that you all saw tonight with the possibilities of the future land sites. So we hope that the community will come out and join us in celebrating our bond conclusion or almost conclusion. Again, that's Wednesday evening at 5:30 PM at Greeley West High School. And then I want to just give a shout out to our Title I schools. Last week, we hosted a parent gathering for parents who were specifically invited from our Title I schools, and our family and parent advocates or liaisons at each of the schools had invited some of those parents to come in, and we had a really good turnout, almost 50 people participated. Our principals were there and our assistant principals from our Title I schools. The family center staff and the family and parent liaisons provided translation. It was really a wonderful evening, and I was so appreciative to hear the voice of parents and to hear what is working well for them in our schools and to hear what else they would like for us to do to help their child be more successful in our schools. And we're putting all that information together in a report, and I will share it with you all through our weekly bulletin once I have that information. But parent voice is so important, and we had an opportunity to hear from parents last week, and it was really, really fortunate. We do plan to do another parent listening session that'll be open district-wide later in November, and then another one second semester with this same group. We ask them each to bring a friend or family member with them next time, but it's that time of season, we need to do some additional listening with our parents. So more to come on that. And then finally, President Matthews, you mentioned the Fulbright Scholars being here tonight, and that they were in, we had two representatives as well as faculty from University of Northern Colorado present with us in our work session, but we have here in the Greeley Evans School District 22 Fulbright Scholars from all over the world. And it's really an honor to have them here in District Six. They are observing at Greeley West High School, Greeley Central High School, and Brentwood Middle School. And these 22 individuals, I believe, were selected from thousands of applicants, thousands and thousands of applicants. They did share a little bit earlier tonight about the process to be selected, and it ranges from, you know, a lengthy application, an exam, a test, to be able to get in, interviews, and really being vetted in their home country to be able to come here. And the remarks that they shared with us, as you all know, were just so positive about our school system, and it's really an honor to have folks here from all over the world and to have the opportunity for our students to engage with educators from other parts of the world here in the Greeley Evans School District. So thank you again to the University of Northern Colorado. Thank you to the Fulbright Scholars who are with us tonight, and thank you for coming and sharing a little bit of yourself with the Greeley and Evans students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda is Innovation 2030 Student Learning and Achievement Update, AVID, AP, and IB. I'll see Mr. Osmus coming to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Osmus. Welcome.
So, good evening, President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. I'm Anthony Osmus. I'm the Assistant Superintendent, serving high schools, middle schools, and K8s, as well as post-secondary and workforce readiness. I'm joined tonight by some amazing people. We have Kim Silva, Director of Schools, Lisa McGee, our Coordinator of Secondary English Language Arts, AVID and IB. We also have the Tom Frazier, AP Coordinator and Teacher at Greeley Central, the amazing Bri Ellis, AVID Coordinator and Teacher at Northridge, and Mr. Jonathan Levispike, IB Coordinator and Assistant Principal now at Dos Rios. We are excited to share this strategic plan update on the progress and achievements within our AVID, Advanced Placement, and International Baccalaureate programs. These courses offer rigorous academic challenges that allow students to earn college credit while still in high school. Through AVID's support system, more students are not only accessing these programs, but also excelling in them. I would like to note that all of these programs, AVID, Advanced Placement, and International Baccalaureate are supported by MLO dollars, and so we would, it would be remiss if we did not say thank you to our community for supporting this work. We cannot do this work to this magnitude without our voters supporting this with the As always, our work is grounded in our mission, where District Six engages every student in a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, preparing students to be college and career-ready, and our vision, where District Six engages, empowers, and inspires today's students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. Grounded in our values, where students come first, we know every child can and will achieve. We believe diversity is a strength. We promote access, opportunities, and choice, and we commit to excellence, innovation, and always continuous improvement. All of this work is found in our strategic plan, but the action steps we'll address tonight fall under Student Learning and Achievement, specifically our Student Learning and Achievement Goal II, under Instruction and Assessment. Our objectives in Student Learning and Achievement Goal II focus on driving academic achievement across our district. Our first objective, to implement a consistent, coherent, and aligned curriculum where we establish rigorous research-based curriculum, assessment, and instructional practices to ensure that all students achieve high levels of learning. And our second goal, where we enhance educator instructional practices, committed to supporting teachers in delivering instruction that promotes access and equity, ensuring every student has the opportunity to succeed. And our third objective, where we provide high-quality professional development. And our plan is to equip educators with the skills and knowledge needed to deliver quality teaching and foster continuous improvement and academic achievement. Over the past four years in this role, I've been proud to support our work focused on raising academic achievement. Our key outcomes include on-time graduation, which now exceeds 87%, increased access to rigorous coursework, and readiness for both college and careers. Tonight's presentation will highlight our progress in these areas. To present on AVID, I'd like to introduce to you Lisa McGee, our Coordinator for English Language Arts, AVID and IB.
Hi, good evening. Oh, we got one more thing.
One more slide I forgot to add here. I just wanted to say thank you to the people, the Action Team members that we have doing this work, who are meeting to make sure that we have great systems in place for this, and so I just wanted to shout out all of these people and say a big thank you from all of us to you.
All right. Good evening, take two. AVID's mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students to be college and career-ready and to find success in a global society. The goal of the AVID program is to prepare students with the skills they will need to follow their chosen career path, whether it's college, technical school, military, trade school, or any other post-secondary training in order to become economically independent and community-minded citizens. As an AVID district, we identified a gap in grade level expectations around organization, leading to misconceptions among students and teachers. AVID emphasizes that self-monitoring and organization are critical for college and career readiness, but rarely developed naturally. Over the summer, two groups of AVID educators addressed this by creating scaffolds for fifth-grade organization and ensuring continuity through sixth grade. A second group expanded on this work for eighth and ninth grades, focusing on in-class organization, school-to-home transitions, students accountability, and teacher and family supports to ease grade level transitions. Site teams have now included organizational goals in their plans and will finalize and submit their grade-level organizational frameworks as part of their AVID evidence for this year. At the end of their senior year, AVID seniors are asked to complete an AVID Senior Data Collection form, and so on the screen you have a few highlights from that form, that we had 116 seniors complete from all of our high schools. So two of our big celebrations is that we saw a great increase in the number of students taking AP or IB exams. Last year, we were at 85%, and this year, it went up to 88. We also saw a significant increase in the number of students with intentions to pursue post-secondary education. The following steps are actions recommended by our team to continue to build the AVID program and provide opportunities for our students. We'd like to provide the eighth-grade AVID elective at middle schools and K8 buildings to support the transition from eighth to ninth grade. Our district AVID leadership team will begin the four-part process of the AVID District Director Training this week. This is a new approach that AVID has developed, and it is, sorry, and the training will ensure that the program development is shared responsibility amongst several of our district leaders, including myself, Mr. Dagan Andrews, Mr. Jeff Cranston, and Ms. Jill Barnes. We also want to continue to maintain two sections per grade level of the AVID elective at high schools and increase middle school AVID elective sections so that at least two per grade level exist. Some middle schools already have two sections per grade level, and others are still working towards this goal so that all students who would benefit from the support of AVID have this opportunity. We also want to continue to increase the opportunity around AVID Excel. AVID Excel is for students identified as CLD in grades six, eight. The AVID Excel course is designed specifically for students identified as limited English proficient in grades six through eight. We are working to ensure that all students identified as CLD who need the academic language and academic writing supports have this additional opportunity. And now to speak to the experience of our AVID students in District Six, I would like to invite Brianna Ellis, AVID Coordinator at Northridge High School.
Good evening. The Northridge site team is helping the staff and students with organizational skills as part of the District Organization Articulation Goal as a primary focus of the AVID program. Ninth graders are provided binders with dividers, pencil pouches, pencils, highlighters, and a planner to set them up for success. In addition, the Northridge staff is implementing the Critical Reading Process with Focus Note Taking each time students read. Students who are learning these strategies in cross-curricular classes and throughout their high school career are going to be able to analyze rigorous texts, so no matter their post-secondary plans, they will be prepared. This consistency helps students to read academic text at high levels and ensures they know the expectations across the building, and it will ensure they are able to maintain their high school competencies and ultimately assist them in graduating. The Critical Reading Process and Focus Note Taking are two strategies that prepare students to be college and career-ready. AVID supports students by providing a supportive environment, academic support, scaffolds, counseling, and guidance. According to one senior AVID student, "AVID has supported me since seventh grade with my academic goals. It has made me a more organized person and has helped me make personal connections and build good relationships with my peers. It has also helped me think outside of the box and to get out of my comfort zone when I need help with my classes. I use my AVID strategies in my other classes, such as annotating what I read, Focus Note Taking, organization, and time management to be successful." Another student described how AVID and the extra support from teachers and peers has helped him with the stressors of senior years such as scholarships, college applications, financial aid, and what life will be like after high school. AVID gives students a safe space where they feel comfortable to ask for help and support each other. It creates a sense of community and family within the school for the students. AVID helps students learn to advocate for themselves and their academic needs. Our students learn to work with their peers, and this teamwork reinforces the idea that they are never alone, and their school family will always be there for them. The program assists students with college applications, financial aid, and the college planning process. Overall, AVID empowers students to take ownership of their education and futures by equipping them with the academic, organizational, and self-advocacy skills they need to thrive.
Good evening. I'm Kim Silva, Director of Schools, and I'm going to talk a little bit about Advanced Placement. So each AP course is modeled on a comparative introductory college course in their subject area. Teachers new to AP are provided with the opportunity to attend an AP Summer Institute in their respective content area, to learn strategies for teaching AP from veteran AP teachers, and to learn about how to prepare students for the format and content of the AP test that is an opportunity for students to earn college credit. AP teachers are also provided an opportunity to engage in AP Horizontal Teaming in their like content areas during the summer, or during District Professional Development Days throughout the school year. The AP teachers have the opportunity to network and expand the AP Horizontal Teaming Collaboration. AP courses are important to our high-level instructional programming, and this slide lists the 25 AP courses offered in District Six comprehensive high schools. We are grateful to our community for passing an MLO so that we are able to purchase consistent district resources for AP courses that align with the College Board's suite of online classroom supports, including unit guides and exam preparation for AP courses. AP teachers across the high schools have engaged in district curriculum and resource adoption process, resulting in board approval of updated resources for students district-wide. Like AVID, the enrollment in AP courses has also steadily increased over the past six years. Scheduling during the COVID pandemic impacted enrollment in 2020, 2021, but since that time, enrollment has bounced back, and this year, we have the highest number of students enrolled in AP courses with 1,911 students taking at least one AP course. In addition to 2021, we had 170 students who are multilingual learners taking an AP course, and this past year, the number increased to 318, showing an 87% increase of students that are multilingual learners enrolled in our AP courses. Many of our AP students take multiple AP courses and pass multiple AP exams throughout their high school years. This slide shows the longitudinal data for the District Six comprehensive high schools and their AP scholars. Based on the 2024 AP exam results from our three comprehensive high schools, the blue bar represents the 81 students who were awarded the AP Scholar Designation for receiving a score of a three or higher on three or more AP exams. The red bar represents the AP Scholars with Honors Designation, which was awarded to 34 students who earned an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of a three or higher on four or more AP exams. The yellow bar represents the 27 students who received the AP Scholars with Distinction Designation for earning an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of a three or higher on four or more AP exams. Designation for earning an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, the score and score of a three or higher on five or more AP exams. And for the first time, District Six has one student from Greeley Central who earned an AP International Diploma. This is a globally-recognized certificate for students who demonstrate high achievement across various subjects and at least two languages. It is available to international students and US students applying to universities abroad, highlighting their academic excellence with a global outlook. This year marks the highest number of AP Scholars, and congratulations to all of the students and teachers for their accomplishments. In addition to our AP Scholars, 18 students earned an AP Seminar and AP Research Certificate for earning scores of three or higher in both AP Seminar and AP Research. Seven students earned the AP Capstone Diploma for earning a three or higher in AP Seminar and AP Research and on four additional AP exams of the students choosing. We had three schools named to the 2024 AP Scholar Honor Roll. University and Frontier were awarded a bronze, and Greeley Central was awarded a silver. The AP Scholar Honor Roll recognizes schools whose AP program are delivering results and broadening access for students. There are three categories measured to attain this distinction, with benchmarks for each level in bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. College Culture measures the percentage of graduating students who took at least one AP exam in high school, regardless of score. College Credit tracks the percentage of students who scored a three or higher on any AP exam, and College Optimization reflects the percentage of students who took five or more AP exams with at least one taken in their ninth or 10th grade year. The following next steps are actions recommended by our team to continue to build the AP program and provide opportunities for students. We would like to continue to increase enrollment in AP courses for all students, including students who are multilingual learners and students receiving special education services, and continue to support all students who are enrolled in our AP courses, and of course, continue to increase the total number of AP Scholars each year. I would like to introduce Tom Frazier, the Greeley Central AP Coordinator and current AP teacher at Central, to talk about AP at Greeley Central and the AP experience for students.
Thank you for this invitation. I was initially taken aback when I feared that President Matthews had identified mine as an old face, but then I realized Kent Henson's right in your line of sight, so I'm fine. We are proud of our scores in District Six, and I think we have a right to be. We had 67 AP Scholars at Central last year. It is a very diverse group. Our largest class is AP English Language, and 74% of those students were English language learners. I understand the focus on test scores, and we do care about test scores, but the AP program is even more important for the students that don't earn qualifying scores, that don't end up on any of those graphs. The students who get fours and fives, we provide them with great experience. As someone who's taught college longer than I've taught high school, however, I realize that most students arrive at college unprepared for college work. And those students who are earning the ones and twos that don't end up, we don't celebrate often enough, those are the students that we are really impacting. Those are the kids that are going to realize, "I know how to get through a college class. I know where I need to go to help. I know how I need to be organized. I know what this process is like. I know that achievement sometimes comes through failure, that I'm going to have to do hard things." And so that AP program is even more important than those great numbers that we saw and that we are very proud of. This year, we have 21 courses at Central, and we have 845 enrollments in those courses. That would not happen without Avid. We have 250 Avid students at Central. It's absolutely key to our success. Your support of both of those programs is key to this success. Just one instance, the AP Jump Start Program that you have helped us support is designed to prepare incoming ninth graders for that initial shock. And because of that Jump Start Program, our numbers for ninth-grade AP students jumped from 23 to 96 this year. And so we are very appreciative of your support for this program. It makes a huge difference for all of our students. Thank you.
All right, and then we want to celebrate the successes of our IB Continuum. We are very proud of the work being done within our District Six IB Continuum, which includes Dos Rios Elementary as the Primary Years Program, Brentwood Middle School as the Middle Years Program, years one through three, and Greeley West for the Middle Years Program, years four through five, as well as our Diploma Program. And IB education is designed to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who will help to create a better and more peaceful world. And we believe our schools are working hard to make this program accessible to all. Prior to stepping into my current position, I was the Middle Years Coordinator at Brentwood Middle School. During my time there, I worked closely with the other IB coordinators to identify goals for our program and create an opportunity for educators to collaborate across a continuum. As we go through a year of transition with new coordinators, we are working to continue to build on the previous momentum around vertical alignment and focus on a rigorous and well-rounded education at all levels of IB. As an IB team, each building administrator, coordinators, and teachers continue to seek opportunities of access for students and increase the number of students who pursue the IB Diploma. Here to speak to the IB for All Movement is Jonathan Lotzberg, who was the former Diploma Program Coordinator at Greeley West and current Assistant Principal for our Primary Years Program at Dos Rios Elementary.
Good evening. The IB for All Initiative is an international movement that aims to increase student access to really high-level courses. We are seeing success for all students with certificates on this model, and I'll get into the data a little bit later. But the core reason for this was because at Greeley West High School, only 1% of all students in the school accessed IB under the fully diploma-only model. With this, our goal is to have 100% of students graduating from Greeley West High School. By 2026, we'll have completed at least one course of IB nature. In short, the IB for All goal is to create IB schools and not IB programs. Second, building this initiative from the ground up, as you can see on the slide there, is that we started a couple of years ago by working through English IX and English X before rolling all of our students into IB SL or HL Literature, so an English course, junior and senior year. Those are two-year-long courses, and so you'll see that reflected again in the data coming up with both testing and enrollments. Here's our current enrollment in IB Diploma Program courses. So again, this is only juniors and seniors at Greeley West. You can see in 2018, that was when we initially removed that barrier. These courses used to have prerequisites, so students had to either take certain courses or earn certain scores in order to access the program entirely. That was removed in 2018, and you can see the enrollment jump almost doubled there with steady growth, moving all the way through to this year, where this is our first year as a fully IB for All school. What that means is that every single junior at Greeley West High School is taking an IB English course as one of their required graduation credits. That number there, 782 students, is the total number in junior and senior year enrollment. 477 of those are IB English. So even when you remove the requirement of the course for enrollments, you'll still see that steady growth, largely due to our new offerings with IB Sports Exercise Physiology, new science offerings, and math offerings. These are our IB Certificate candidates. Again, this is slightly different from full diplomas. In order to earn a full IB Diploma, students have to take all six IB courses, including one higher level, and they have to hit all of these different areas of knowledge, right? So they have to have experience writing an extended essay, they have to do community service hours, along with passing all those exams. Our shift to the IB for All model has been focusing largely on these IB Certificate candidates, so students who, again, may not be the top 1% in the school but should still have access to that same caliber of classes. These students, we have 92 who tested last year, taking 184 tests in total. In order to earn a certificate, a student needs to score a four out of seven on the IB exam at the end of the year. That includes both year-long class projects and an exam similar to AP. 64 scored a four or better. A little bit more about those diploma students, though, the ones who are taking on the full course load of an IB Diploma. We had 13 candidates last year complete all requirements, six of them earning the necessary 24 points across six subject areas in order to earn that full IB Diploma, which is equivalent to 24 college credits. This year, we are maintaining steady enrollment with candidate, full diploma candidates with 12 and four IB Scholars, which is a new recognition at Greeley West for students who are taking three or more IB courses. Next steps with the IB for All Initiative is to continue increasing enrollment in our IB courses for all students, specifically targeting multilingual and special education students and their access to these courses, continuing to increase enrollment in those programs at Greeley West, and then adding the Career Pathways Program, which will be another two years, I think, before it'll be fully offered. They're beginning the initial steps of application now, as I understand it. That will augment our already-strong CTE program and give students the opportunity to earn college credits along the way. Thank you.
In the District Six IB Experience, students take ownership of their learning, developing as critical thinkers and problem solvers who contribute positively to society. In the PYP program, Dos Rios students engage in hands-on activities that spark curiosity and foster a love for learning. In MYP classrooms, students collaborate on group projects, conduct research, and build models tied to real-world inquiries. At Brentwood, students earlier this year partnered with CSU's forestry program, planting trees and discussing environmental challenges, connecting their learning to global issues. Both schools also celebrate students demonstrating IB learner-profile traits with certificates, prizes, and a lot of cheering. At Greeley West, all 10th graders complete personal projects exploring topics of interest while building inquiry, research, and presentation skills. These projects are showcased in the spring, and academic achievements are honored with a pinning ceremony, symbolizing students' commitment to academic rigor and global citizenship. As a continuum, we are extremely proud of the work being done to foster an IB education in District Six. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight and for that presentation, and I imagine we'll have some questions coming in from students and from board members, and it looks like we do, so I'll go ahead and defer to them. Mr. Longacre, is that you that's rung in? You're first, go ahead.
I quickly wanted to just thank all of you for the amazing programs you provided. I was lucky enough to actually receive an AP Scholar Award earlier this year, and I honestly don't think I couldn't have done that without the amazing teachers and educators we have here in District Six through those programs. And Avid, I actually have a good friend of mine that has been in Avid since her middle school years, and she's been able to have some amazing experiences right now. She's through Avid trying to get into colleges, through scholarship programs, things like that. She's even been able to go to a Denver Nuggets game through Avid. I just think that's incredible stuff. And even AP, I've been able to go to Ilitch's for one of my AP classes, and that's just amazing stuff. Our students not only go through incredibly hard courses, but that, they're afforded fruit for their labor, basically. They're given something back in return. You went through a lot of work. Here, we'll give you something fun to do to just get rid of the stress, because these classes are stressful, but because of the amazing educators we have here in the district, it makes everything a lot easier for us all. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longacre. Mr. Ozori.
So one of our next steps you mentioned was to provide the eighth-grade Avid elective at all middle schools and K-8s. Right now, we don't do that. What's the timeframe on that? When's that going to happen?
Yeah, so that has been a goal that has carried over from last year, and because of master scheduling and FTE, we have a few buildings who are running a hybrid model of Avid, and so it might be happening during an Avid, or I'm sorry, during an advisory period, but it's not specifically the eighth-grade Avid elective Weeks at a Glance Curriculum that they're using day-to-day. So our hope is, is that we start looking at master schedules this year, looking towards next year, and identifying and training our teachers that we can increase that even by next year.
Dr. Campos Spitsi.
So all of these programs, Avid, AP, IB, to me, they're what it means to prepare our students to be college and career-ready, right? Like basic things, organizational skills, focused note-taking, all of those things, setting them up for success. I'm just so proud to see the growth in all of these programs, not just in one, but all the accessibility to our multilanguage learners and that focus to want to make it even more accessible for them, and that we really are serving all our students. And just so proud, I mean, the numbers you guys were quoting, it's like 87% growth here, and, you know, just incredible, and just what a service for our students so that when they get to college, they are ready and not having to remediate and possibly even saving some money with some of those AP courses. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsi. And I will echo those remarks that she just made. That is significant progress, both in AP and IB and Avid, and we couldn't be more proud, but that is real, real education. When we talk about, I mean, this is what we say, that we want, we want our students to be college and career-ready, and we focus a lot on career readiness, but this is our college readiness, not just making, equipping students to do well in college, but actually making it possible, because it's more than just a few dollars that are saved because of AP and IB. It is, it is semester's worth of tuition, and so we are very excited about the growth of these programs and very thankful for the work that you guys have put in to make them possible. So thank you for being here tonight. Next on our agenda tonight is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not respond, but we may ask our district staff to do so. All written testimony or handouts must be submitted to our Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner, cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not permitted. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and all remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th-grade students. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. With that read, tonight, first, our first speaker is Ms. Terri Pappas. Welcome, Ms. Pappas. Thank you for being here, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Pilch, and Council of Student Reps. I appreciate that you are going to consider a resolution to oppose Amendment 80 this evening. This is a misleading proposal that could have significant impact on our public schools while costing Colorado taxpayers millions of dollars. This amendment appears to offer parents options for school choice. It is specifically a way to get funding in private schools. Many believe that this is the first step in creating a voucher system, which would use taxpayer dollars to fund private schools while permanently locking in a right to private schools. Amendment 80 is unnecessary. A Colorado law passed by the legislature in 1994 grants students the ability to attend any public school for free, including neighborhood schools, charter schools, and online schools. It also lets parents opt to enroll their children in a private school or homeschool program. 95% of students in Colorado attend public schools, and current education funding is distributed to public schools, charter schools, and online schools. Any and every child can attend a public school at no cost. Passing of Amendment 80 would have a significant impact on rural school districts, most of which don't have private schools. Rural school districts in our state already suffer from limited school funding. This measure could result in a system that pulls money from all over the state to fund private schools' tuition, primarily in large, wealthy districts. Greeley Avenue School District Six is one of the largest school districts in Colorado. Students in this district have opportunity to attend any of our public schools, our charter schools, and an online school. Families in our communities also have options to send their children to private schools if they wish. I encourage you to adopt a resolution opposing Amendment 80 because this amendment is disguised as protecting- as protecting school choice. It can be very misleading. Your voices in this matter will make a difference to voters in our community. Our public funds belong in public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Next tonight, we have Ms. Beverly Green. Welcome, Ms. Green. Thank you for being here. You have two minutes.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate the board considering a position of opposition for Amendment 80 also. Arizona passed a similar voucher bill July 2022, which resulted in a budget meltdown for that state. The bill originally estimated to cost sixty-five million. The cost was three-hundred-and-thirty-two million in 2023, and in July 2024 this year, it was expected to cost four-hundred-and-twenty-nine million. Colorado can afford this, and it would hurt funding for our public schools. If this board votes to oppose it, you will be joining many other organizations that are in a position of opposition. These include the Colorado Education Association, Stand for Children, Colorado Association of School Executives, Colorado PTA, Colorado Democrats, Colorado Fiscal Institute, New Era Colorado, United New Economy, Bell Policy Center, Colorado League of Women Voters, AFT Colorado, A for Pep, the AAUW Colorado, Soul to Soul Sisters, Educate Unite, Advocate for Women, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Colorado, Colorado Immigration Rights Coalition, Partners in Education, Great Education Colorado, Colorado AFL-CIO, ACLU Colorado, Colorado Working Families Party, Colorado Association of School Boards, One Political Action Committee, Colorado Rural School Alliance, and Colorado Black Women Action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next tonight, we have Ms. Rhonda Solis. Welcome, Ms. Solis. Thank you for being here, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. So, I want to give you a little bit of a board, state board perspective, a little story about a neighbor of ours, Fort Collins. Several years ago, Pooter School District wanted to put a hold on how many charters they allowed in their district. The purpose was they didn't want any new charters coming in that were offering things that were already in place in their school district. That was appealed to the State Board of Education. That board then took their charter authorization away from that district, so charters no longer had to go to that local community to talk about opening up in their district. They now go to the Colorado Charter School Institute, which is in Denver. That board that oversees that is appointed by the governor. It is not an elected position, so they have lost their charter authorization authority in Fort Collins several years ago. They still do not have it, and now they have declining enrollment, and so now they're closing and consolidating schools, and in that, those charters that have opened up, that have gotten the okay from Denver, are not part of that conversation. As we know, these decisions are really traumatic to a community, so as you move forward and look at things like Amendment 80, I think it's really important that we look at local control, and what I, as a State Board of Education member, actually have the authority to do. When you guys deny a charter, it can come before me on appealment, and we, as a state board, can say, yes, you will have that charter in your community, even if we don't live in your community. As we know, we've worked really hard on our relationships with our local charters. I thank Dr. Pilch for that work, but imagine having a charter come into your community that's already a contentious relationship, and now you're in this marriage with this charter, and you're going to have to figure out a contract and figure out how to move forward. I really believe in local control. I support local control, and I want to make sure we, as a district and as a community, continue to make sure that we are making the decisions of what schools open up in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Next tonight, we have Ms. Michelle Selgren. Welcome, Ms. Selgren. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
You'll have two minutes.
So, I am really overwhelmed by all the good news that you guys have. I appreciate your guys' leadership, especially Mrs. Pilch. Ever since she's gotten here, she's changed things up, so I think that you guys should be very proud of the work that you do. I was encouraged by Dr. Pilch's letter about zero tolerance in regards to school threats and violence. I'm here today because I want to encourage you to expand that zero tolerance policy to schools, because as we are all aware of, especially some of us who graduated in ninety-nine, school violence starts way before it reaches the tipping point with bullying and threats. My kids especially have come into interactions with other students that I feel like the school hasn't taken that zero tolerance policy in regards to the punishments or enforcements or things that we come up to against students who voluntarily threaten the safety of other students, such as tripping them, making their bones break, stealing their money, inappropriate touches and talks, and those kinds of things. I would love to see you guys extend that zero tolerance policy to those small offenses to keep our schools safe, to keep kids from having to confront those words, those threats, those coercions out of the school system so that they can continue to learn like they do every day. I appreciate your guys' continued work. My daughter is now two years into UNC School for her bachelor's in business without zero debt, no loans because of your guys' programs. My sons are exceeding as well. Thank you for considering extending your zero tolerance to that.
Thank you, Ms. Selgren.
Have a great day.
You, too. Next tonight, we have Mr. Brian Sullivan. Welcome, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Okay, my wife, Taylor, received a letter from the District Six School Board that was from a former teacher, Mrs. Norrie Martin. Karen was upset that we fly multiple flags at our private residence. They support President Trump and wanted to complain to the other whiners on the board in hopes that you'd squash my First Amendment rights like you do every public participation before every public participation comment period. In Karen's letter, it states that she sent us a letter asking us to take our flags down and have a conversation with her. Well, Karen's a damn liar, because we never received anything like that.
Mr. Sullivan, please.
This is my First Amendment rights, Mr. Matthews, and my time's running.
Mr. Sullivan.
So, we fly an American flag and various other ones underneath saying things like gun owners for Trump, the Gadsden flag, hopefully you know that, and a fuck Biden flag. My first question to you is what concern is it to you and the rest of the cowards up there?
You're out of order, sir. This is my First Amendment rights, and if you would like a lawsuit, keep going.
This needs to be appropriate.
No, it is. My First Amendment rights don't stop with the school board or any other person that's under the age of eighteen. My First Amendment rights don't stop with you, period.
You're out of order.
My order is my First Amendment rights. My civic rights is to redress my government, which is you people, all right? And you're intruding on my time. Please restore that. My First Amendment rights become before yours, period.
Okay, my first question is concerned is it's none of your damn business. What I do in my private business?
Mr. Sullivan, that's at least three times you've used profanity in this building. Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, you are out of order. I'm not trampling on your rights, sir. Yes, you do, and you do not have a right to use profanity in this building. Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. You have used over your time, sir. You used profanity in this meeting, sir. You do not have any more time. You are done, sir. Mr. Sullivan, you're It doesn't matter. Cuss words are protected under the First Amendment, period. They are. Go read the First Amendment. Every one of you knows that. Every one of you knows that, or should know it. I'm asking to do my time, like my constitutional rights protect me of. Every one of you, I want your badge number and your And your name. You're not going to give that to me? You lost. You lost? No, I want my time. All of you who listen to this, they're trampling on our lives. My First Amendment rights are not letting me do this. I do apologize to our audience. We do try to maintain order and have a dignified meeting. We try to keep the language in this room, because we have many times, students, we do have students in this room. Many times, we have elementary students in this room, and so we do ask that all of our public participants respect that, and as you've seen, some of them do not. And so, my apologies to all of you. We will move on with our business, which is our consent agenda, and this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Starting your discussion on the consent agenda. Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is a resolution to oppose Amendment 80. This also is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approve the resolution to oppose Amendment 80 as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. The first thing we would like to do is to read this resolution. I neglected to ask anybody to read it. Ms. Mash, would you be so kind as to read the resolution for us?
Proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six. Resolution in opposition of Amendment 80. Whereas the Weld County School District Six Board of Education is charged with the general supervision of public education in the Greeley and Evans communities, and whereas public education is a fundamental right and cornerstone of democratic societies, providing equal opportunities for all children to develop their full potential, and whereas public schools serve the vast majority of Colorado's children and provide a safe and inclusive learning environment for all students, regardless of their socioeconomic status, race, or background. And whereas the Weld County School District Six Board of Education believes the existing school choice framework has long been a pillar of Colorado's public education system and already provides ample educational opportunities that enable parents to choose an educational program that meets their children's diverse needs. And whereas a ballot initiative to amend the Colorado Constitution, which will appear on the general election ballot this November as Amendment 80, purports to expand educational options but represents an unnecessary change to the Colorado Constitution. And whereas Amendment 80 creates a constitutional right to school choice that would, for the first time, enshrine enrollment options to private schools and home schools. And whereas Amendment 80 makes no provisions for transparency and accountability for private institutions receiving public funding, which undermines public accountability and transparency, because private schools that receive public funds through these programs are not held to the same rigorous standards of financial disclosure, inclusivity, or academic accountability as public schools. And whereas Amendment 80 provides no protections against private school selection of students based on academic ability, behavior, beliefs, identity, or disability, and such practices can be discriminatory and further exacerbate educational inequalities by failing to afford equivalent choice opportunities for students with greater needs who may be disproportionately served by public schools. And whereas rural communities and places that are already struggling to hire teachers and keep doors open will be hit the hardest because most rural areas lack private schools, and any program that redirects public funding to private institutions with further divert resources away from rural public schools and communities disproportionately benefiting private schools in urban areas like Denver and Boulder. And whereas Amendment 80 would divert public funds away from our public schools and is likely to increase existing inequalities with respect to access to education. And whereas Amendment 80 is an unnecessary, duplicative, and misleading proposal that could devastate funding for our public schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Weld County School District Six Board of Education hereby officially declares its opposition to Amendment 80 and encourages all community members to take part in the 2024 election.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Are there any questions or comments on the resolution from board members? Dr. Campos Spitsi.
So, first, I wanted to thank our public community members who participated in public participation regarding Amendment 80. I know that resolutions can sometimes have kind of flowery language, so I wanted to be clear as to why I will vote to pass this resolution to oppose Amendment 80. Amendment 80 is the first step toward a voucher program in the state of Colorado, a voucher program that will serve to funnel our already limited school funds away from public schools to private schools. I want to remind everyone listening that Colorado ranks thirty-sixth in the nation for per pupil funding. We are underfunded in K through 12 and have been for decades. As has already been said before tonight, school choice is already Colorado law. A law passed by the legislature in 1994 already grants students the ability to attend any public school for free, including neighborhood schools, charter schools, and online schools. Colorado is a leader in school choice. We are the third state in the nation to allow charter schools, and our charters, as already mentioned, receive public dollars. We're also champions of school choice in that we allow for open enrollment, not only within our school district, but between districts. Public school choice has been a pillar of Colorado's public education system for thirty years, and no one is looking to take that away. We have school choice, so why have 1.3 million dollars been spent by wealthy in and out-of-state organizations to get this amendment on our ballot? I believe Amendment 80 is being used as a way to go around voters in Colorado to pass a voucher program that will allow taxpayer money to go to private schools. In Colorado, in the nineties, voters turned down three education voucher ballot initiatives. Since 2016, the Colorado Legislature has turned down any type of voucher or education saving account eighteen times. But if you know me, you know I like to look at both sides of an issue before I make up my mind, so I looked at how Arizona's universal voucher program introduced in 2022 has been ferry. Arizona is the leader in voucher programs in the country. I wanted to know specifically how the state budget is being impacted by the voucher program, and I also wanted to know if it's serving low-income students. I was disappointed on both counts. I found that the state of Arizona this year faced a 1.4 billion-dollar budget shortfall, B, billion, much of which was a result of the new voucher spending. As has been mentioned before tonight, last fiscal year alone, the price tag of universal vouchers in Arizona skyrocketed from an estimated under 65 million to roughly 332 million. Another 429 million in cost is expected this year. As a result of this unexpected spending, Arizona is now having to make deep cuts to critical state programs and projects. Three-hundred-and-thirty million from water infrastructure projects, tens of millions from highway expansions and repairs, and Arizona community colleges are seeing their budgets cut by 54 million dollars. and Arizona community colleges are seeing their budgets cut by fifty-four million dollars. Well, my next question was, has the spending been worth it for our most at-risk students? Were they able to gain access to private school education in Arizona? Unfortunately, the answer is no. In Arizona, the most affluent communities are securing a highly disproportionate share of the funds from the state's voucher program. Families in the poorest communities, this was measured by looking at zip codes with residents using more food stamps, having lower median household incomes, and lower higher educational attainment, these families are the least likely to obtain these funds. Instead, these families continue to send their kids to the neighborhood school, schools that are now receiving less funds. Amendment Eighty, as already mentioned, will also take money away from rural schools where there is no private school option. Additionally, though private schools can't discriminate based on disability, they aren't required to comply with the Individual with Disabilities Education Act requirements that provide certain benefits and services to children with disabilities in public schools. With all that said, I hope that through tonight's resolution, our community feels better informed about the negative implications that this seemingly harmless amendment can cause for our public schools, including our charters and rural schools. And my hope is that you will join me in making your voice heard by voting in this fall's election. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Pitsi. Any other comments from board members? Mr. Norwood?
Thank you, Mr. President. As with a lot of the ballot issues, if I don't understand them, I usually try to reach out to people that I feel comfortable with their opinion, as I did with Amendment Eighty. I reached out to some current and former state legislators. They said that it was awkwardly written and that there's a possibility that if this amendment passed, it could take away some parental choice. So therefore, tonight I will vote to support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Ms. Sullivan?
So I too have done the same thing on this amendment. I reached out to several people just to get some clarity and some information.
Speak and make sure you speak into the microphone. I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry, is that better?
Thank you, Ms. Lemon.
Okay, I too have reached out to several people, former congresswomen and whatnot, community members and whatnot that are proponents either on both sides of this, just to get a better understanding of it as well. Because I am a pro-parent, pro-choice believer that the parents should be able to decide what the education is going to be for their children. So if they choose to keep them in a public school, that is their decision. If they choose to move them to a private school, charter school, homeschooling, again, the parents have to decide what's right for them. But what I don't like about how this is written, because it sounds well and good when you're starting to read it out, is that it's not supportive of the parent's decision. So it pretty much is taking away the parent's choice but giving the children the right to that decision-making when you read the policy a little bit clearer. And we should be providing a robust market of options for parents to take their kids to. And if by reason they pull them from the public school, then we need to address those issues and find why it is that they're leaving. But I am going to actually support the opposition of this one. So I'm going to be voting with the board, but on a different measure, likewise with Mr. Norwood. That it's just not clear. It's pretty ambiguous as to how it's written.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any other comments from board members?
I'll say, we'll see if we have any more. But I'll just say that this amendment, I would say deceptively, says that it is about choice and promotes choice. And it would promote choice for some, or some greater choice. It would add some additional choices for some students. It's just that it would limit the choices for so many more students. I think it was Ms. Papas that said that only five percent of students attend private schools in the state of Colorado. Well, that five percent is not distributed equally throughout the state. That if you go to wealthier communities, you have a higher percentage of people choosing private schools. Only three percent of the students in Weld County attend a private school. So even if this, and this would provide for private funding or for public funding of private schools. Eventually, that is what would happen. And what that means is that, well, some would have the choice. They would take those vouchers and go to private schools. But let's say we doubled the number of students in private schools in Weld County. Well, that would be good for fifteen hundred students. But that would still mean that there are ninety-four percent, right? If we doubled from three percent to six percent, ninety-four percent of the students that are served in Weld County would have their choices limited. And that's because the money would come from public education. And those of you who are here tonight or watching online, you've already seen what we've been able to do with additional funding. When we've been able to expand Avid, we've been able to expand AP, we've been able to expand IB, we've been able to expand internships, we've been able to expand career and technical education. All of these programs, and when we lose the amount of money that we would lose per pupil funding if this passed and a voucher system was eventually implemented, if we were to lose that funding, those are the programs that are at risk because those are those additional programs that we offer. So yes, it does provide some additional choice for a few students, but it limits the choices of so many more, especially students like our special education students that I mentioned earlier. Those students are not necessarily served, or at least served very well, by our private schools. It limits the choice certainly of our rural schools. Private schools only exist, they don't even exist in half the counties in Colorado. So for those students, when those school districts have their per pupil funding cut, those students only have their choices limited. This is not about expanding choice. And if it's passed and if a voucher system is implemented, it will only cut choices for our public school students, which serve the vast majority. So I will be voting in support of the resolution. And I don't see anyone else has signed up to speak or pressed their button to speak. So Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our approval of school accreditation plan types. I see Mr. Tuttle coming to the podium. Welcome, Mr. Tuttle. Thank you for being here tonight to present this school accreditation plan types to us.
Thank you, President Matthews. Dr. Pilch, members of the school board member. This is a brief overview of the district accreditation. And it's for your information's sake because it'll be going to the State Board of Education here. Do you want me to pause? President Matthews, do you need to do your resolution before I do the presentation or?
Oh, yeah, we did. Oh, you have something, Amy? I'm sorry. Do we? Oh, this isn't...
I just need a motion.
I'm sorry. We need a motion before you come to us, Mr. Tuttle. Sorry, I was getting ahead of myself.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approve the scheduled accreditation ratings as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. We're now open for business. Go ahead, Mr. Tuttle.
The first part of this is just for information's sake because it is going to be going to the state Board of Education for their approval in December. And that is their assignment of the accreditation types for the district. So I'm going to share that with you at the beginning here. State board, or the, I'm sorry. State policy here is zero nine one sixty-three allows for the accreditation system in Colorado. The state accreditation system became law in two thousand nine. This system is a method for accrediting districts and schools across the state and provides guidelines for giving differential support to districts and schools depending on their accreditation type and associated school improvement plan type. For each district and high school, there's the district performance framework and the school performance framework that is broken down into three subcategories. The slide presents forty percent on academic growth, thirty percent on academic achievement, and thirty percent on post-secondary and workforce readiness. At the elementary and middle school levels, it's sixty percent on academic growth and forty percent on academic achievement. Here are some of the indicators for the achievement section. Here's some of the indicators for the growth section. And here's some of the indicators for the post-secondary workforce readiness category. Districts are accredited by the state in one of five categories, depending upon the percentage of performance indicator points they earn on the district performance framework. They can be accredited with distinction, accredited, accredited with improvement plans, accredited with a priority improvement plan, or accredited with a turnaround plan. The latter two accreditation levels include varying degrees of intervention by Colorado Department of Education. Our district is accredited with an improvement plan. This slide shows also the positive direction that we've been going the last few years, still while within the improvement plan category. Now let me shift to school accreditation types. District Six will be accrediting schools based on the plan type each school has been assigned by the state. Based on each school's attainment on the performance indicators, the Colorado Department of Education makes a recommendation as to whether each school should be implemented as a performance plan, an improvement plan, a priority improvement plan, or a turnaround plan. These are the same designations as the district without the distinction option. These are the thirteen schools that are at the performance level. These are the thirteen schools that are at the improvement level. These are the six schools that are in priority improvement and no schools in turnaround status compared to three last year. Let me turn it back to President Matthews for any questions and to approve the school accreditation ratings.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Do we have any questions for Mr. Tuttle? And I will explain to our audience, we received this information in our work session. This is the second time that we've received this information. So we might not have any questions. But we do from a student, and I think it's Ms. Venegas. Is that right? Only, by the way, I only get to see student one, student two. So sometimes I can't tell which one is requesting to speak. But I think it's Ms. Venegas. Is that you? Go ahead, Ms. Venegas.
I would just like to recognize and thanking and congratulating all the hard work from all the schools for no turnaround, which I think is absolutely amazing. I know all students appreciate their schools holding them to a high bar and giving them that motivation to continue to grow. I am a student at Early College Academy, which is absolutely amazing to know that we are in that improvement. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
That's the performance category. Yeah, the highest rating. Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Venegas. Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda, we have the approval of district unified improvement plan and school unified improvement plans. And this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six, I'm on the wrong one. Okay, approves the district unified improvement plan and school unified improvement plans as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Mr. Tuttle, I'll give it back to you for this presentation.
Well, let me shift now to the work of our unified improvement plans for both the district and our schools. Let me begin with the district UIP. We began the work in May as we wrapped up last year and had our local data to analyze. Then as the state data became available over the summer, along with the district performance framework that came out in late August, we triangulated our focus and made appropriate revisions. We also sought feedback from our district accountability committee and aligned our action steps and implementation benchmarks to our I-20 strategic plan. We developed three major improvement strategies. The first one is quality tier-one instruction. And that is how we support the instruction across the board for all of our students. And you'll see some additional focus there on making sure that we have access points for our students that are on IEPs or are multilingual learners. Our second MIS, our major improvement strategy, is support for students and staff. This will utilize our multi-tiered system of support, our MTSS system, to provide supports. And it's also additional supports for students around attendance and student engagement within our schools. Our third major improvement strategy is around family engagement. And you'll see four bullets here, creating a welcoming environment. The second one, intentional about re-engaging families in the community and to our schools. The third one, monitoring the inclusivity of disaggregated populations. And the fourth one, focusing on efforts to create opportunities aligned to the parents' desires for family engagement in our schools. Next steps, after you approve all of our unified improvement plans this evening, we submit those up to the state tomorrow by October fifteenth. And then we work the plan. We continue working that all the way through this year. Now let me shift to the school unified improvement plans. House Bill sixteen fourteen forty allows schools with performance plan type to submit a UIP on a biannual basis. That means every other year. Internally, we require that all non-charter schools to have two years of a performance rating and consistent leadership before considering biannual submission. There are four schools that have opted for a biannual submission, Frontier, Union Colony Elementary, University Schools, and Westridge Academy. And I shared, we had several schools that also qualified for it, but the principal said, I want to still submit. That drives the work of our building. And so they opted to submit the unified improvement plan. There's a lot of benefits around our unified improvement plan. And this slide just shows a few of those. The unified improvement planning template aligns our analysis and planning around three guiding questions and includes these critical components within the UIP process. Buildings are also aligning their focus to our Innovation I-2030. It's also focused on the school needs and includes their major improvement strategies. And then we monitor that throughout the year, both with student data that we're collecting, staff data that we're collecting around implementation of particular strategies. And we're sharing that constantly back and forth with our school accountability committees. We have asked the buildings to align their major improvement strategies to the district ones. And so you'll see each one has something around focus around major improvement strategy one with quality tier-one instruction. What's that first level of instruction for all students? And what does that look like? And zoning in on particular needs within their buildings. MIS two, support for students and staff. And each building, again, got to zero on what's the need for their building and how are they going to drive after that? And in some buildings, we, all schools have family engagement action steps. Some incorporated that into their MIS two, some isolated that as a separate MIS three. I'll once again turn it back to President Matthews for any questions and for approvals of these.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Are there any questions, Mr. Tuttle, on this? Our unified improvement plan? I'll explain again. We did receive this information too in our work session, had plenty of opportunity to ask questions. But I don't see any, Mr. Tuttle. So thank you for being here and thank you for the presentation. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. That is all the business that we have tonight. Our meeting is adjourned.